The January 16, 2025 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows. On January 25, 2024, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerks Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Ms. Wolferman. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative for this evening, Marvin Alexis from Colonial High School.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marvin Alexis is a senior at Colonial High School who is ranked eighth in his class. He was recently accepted and will be attending Columbia University in the fall. Marvin is what can be described best described as a scholar. This past summer, he spent a week participating in the prestigious Boy State Program at Rider University where he worked with his peers to build a government. In addition, he participated in SEEDS, a 17-month program which provides highly motivated students with access to top-tier universities through a semester of Saturday classes and a three-week college tour in the summer. Marvin has been involved in the science research program throughout his high school, where each year he has formulated, researched, and presented a topic of his choosing. This year, his project is entitled "The Effect of Demographic Factors on Machine Learning Algorithms: A Mitigation Approach," where he is studying how AI, artificial intelligence, and ML, machine learning, reacts to publicly available data sets. Due to his stellar academic achievements, Marvin has been inducted into the following honor societies: the National Honor Society, Science, Spanish, and Mu Alpha Theta, where he serves as an officer. Whenever you see Marvin, it is hard not to notice his infectious smile and warm personality. Marvin, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Massimino, members of COE, President Harris, and members of the Board of Education for inviting me here today. At our district, many of our schools conducted their winter chorus and band concerts. The WTSD schools are participating in the Have a Heart Food Drive and the Diwali Food Drives. The first-grade students participated in Be a Hero Assembly by Omega Man. The middle schools and high schools are beginning the scheduling process for the 2025-2026 school year with grades six through 11. At School 4 and 5, on January 8, they had the American Heart Association Heart Heroes Assembly. At School 20, there was a school-wide assembly to kick off the service learning project for Ronald McDonald House charities. Pop Tab Collection and the House Design Contest is open. Submissions are being collected from students through the end of January, and the student body will then select the winning design for the outdoor pop tab house. The kids' heart challenge kickoff assembly. At School 21, Student Council partnered with Stricklands for Winter Wonderland Toy Drive, and Grade 3 had the Mind in Your Mind Assembly. At School 22, they conducted their first-ever book swap in December, where students donated books from their home libraries and exchanged them for books donated by their peers as a recycling initiative. All students, regardless of donation status, were able to claim new books for their home libraries. The Holiday Toy Drive concluded on December 20, with hundreds of toy donations from the school community being collected and donated to children at St. Peter's Children's Hospital. The annual reading incentive program, Ready, Set, Read, kicked off on January 2, challenging students to meet weekly reading benchmarks throughout the month. At School 27, Student Council organized a drive where donations were collected for the Woodbridge Animal Shelter. CMS Sidekick students visited the 4th grade classes for the first time this year on December 18. At Avonel Middle School, Mrs. Olivera was recognized as Governor Educator, as the Governor Educator of the Year recipient, and Mrs. Maj as the Support Person of the Year. Boys' and Girls' Basketball completed a successful season, with both teams finishing in second place. The Winter Dance Performance took place on Wednesday, January 15. At Colonial Middle School, the Colonial Cup, located in the front lobby, is open for daily business. This is a fully functioning takeout coffee shop. It provides the special education students with life skills and running a small business, and the coffee is the best in town. The Girls' Basketball Team was undefeated and won the district championship. The school recently received a Digital School Star for Excellence in Educational Technology. They are currently one of only 48 schools in New Jersey to receive this honor. In addition, they received recognition as a Bronze Certified School by Sustainable Jersey. The Gardening Club uses their award-winning sustainability courtyard to help implement their green initiatives. The school also received a $10,000 grant from Sustainable Jersey, and the PSEG Foundation is being used to further enhance its courtyard. And finally, at Colonial High School, on December 10, the ID and Autism Program took a trip to New York City to see the Radio City Christmas Spectacular featuring the Rockettes. The Youth Empowerment Club collected donations for the Lauren Rose Foundation to help mothers in need during the holiday season. The Interact Club hosted themed hand-in-hand events for special needs adults, featuring games, craft making, scavenger hunts, gingerbread house decorating, and dancing. Additionally, the club organized a holiday food drive and rewarded the top contributing class with a bowling trip. CHS Guitar Club's Winter Coffee House was held at 6:30 PM Wednesday, December 18, in Caf 2. Students from the African-American Studies classes and members of the CHS Black Student Union visited the National Blacks and Wax Museum in Baltimore, Maryland. In December, 29 CHS Science Research students applied for the Junior Science and Humanity Symposium. This fair, held at Rutgers University, is the regional branch of the larger national fair run by the Department of Defense. DECA students will compete in DECA Regional Competition on January 10 at King University. Girls Who Code hosted an hour of code during lunches, where they introduced students to computer science and programming. Thank you all for allowing me to be a part of this evening's Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, Marvin, for your detailed report. Tonight, you're welcome to stay. However, we're going to be heading up to closed session shortly. You're welcome to stay again, but if you have homework, feel free to excuse yourself.
Unfortunately, I have an English paper I have to finish, so everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bourdain, please read the...
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Dr. Massimino. Tonight, we're being joined by Mr. Chiara, Principal at Colonial High School. Thank you for being here. Ms. Bourdain, please read the closed session statement, please.
Lost my page there. Thank you, President Harris. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public, and the reason for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exists.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Board will retire to closed session. We'll be done as soon as possible. Thank you. Please rise for the salute at the flag in a moment of silence.
Please leave the flag.
United States of America. One nation, a draw, with the principle of equality and justice.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion or reconvene?
So, motion.
Good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion.
Good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, I have a motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, seeing none. Carried. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids or proposals received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bids were received.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of December 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I presented the Board the following reports for the month of December 2024: register statistics, register report of fire drills, student suspension report for the elementary, student suspension report for the secondary, bomb threat report, and the monthly report of the attendance officers.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. If you're wishing to speak on an agenda item this evening, please come up to the microphone with your name and the section of the town and the agenda item. Seeing none. Superintendent's Agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have 28 items to present to the Board this evening.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, motion.
Hang on, John. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, I vote yes on all items except number 28 in the name of Rutgers University.
You're abstaining on 28.
I'm abstaining on 28, yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Perez.
Mr. President, I will also be abstaining on item number 28, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Thank you. Communication Policy and Planning Agenda. Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, the Communication Policy and Planning Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following seven recommendations. Before I move for the foregoing, just want to let everyone know that item number seven, which is the policy, is in process, so there will be some more changes in the next reading to this document. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? To the public, just want to note two items on this agenda. We have the Board calendar for the remainder of the calendar year. That's in the packet. That will be published on the website shortly, as well as the next-year student calendar for beginning September, well, officially beginning July 1, but for most residents, September onwards, we have our '25-'26 student calendar. You know, a lot of people like to make plans, when to get back from vacation, when to start their vacation, so on and so forth, so please take a look at that. Actually, there was a third item. As Dr. Massimino knows, it's item number four here, important for us this school year. The June primary has been moved from June 3 to June 10. Thus, what was a non-school day on Tuesday, June 3, that will now be a school day, and Tuesday, June 10, which is now the primary election day, that will be a no-school day. So, please note your calendars, parents. We look forward to having your students on the 3rd. All right. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris.
Oh, sorry, you got to make yes. I apologize. Next up, before we get to curriculum, I'm going to go to Mr. Passereno. Mr. Passereno, please provide an overview of the Fall 2024 NJGPA Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Fall 2024 NJGPA is a test that is administered to our 11th-grade students, but it's also too important for the public to understand that this group of students represents those who were unsuccessful during their junior year, so we give this test again as a means to help them meet their graduation proficiency requirements. So, while we are talking about a test that is given to 11th graders to graduate, this is something that is given to them again as a 12th-grade student. It's also for any student that has transferred into the district or has not taken this test. So, in terms of a cohort of students, the percentages that are represented in this test administration are really only a fraction of those students who test. You know, for the public's perspective, there are currently 1,173 students in Grade 12, so when we're looking at some of those numbers, we are talking about a percentage of a percentage versus the students in each school.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the Board on the GPA results? Okay, all right. Mr. Passereno, when is the test typically administered in the spring semester? Are students aware of when that comes out? I'm sure they're aware, but could you share?
The test changes. To speak off the top of my head, it's usually in the spring. I would say it's usually about April.
April, okay.
Off the top of my head, so somewhere about there. It usually predates the AP testing that's done in May.
Got it.
And again, this is a requirement for graduation, so every student has to sit for this test until they are successful or until they have neared the end of their senior year where they can be portfolio.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to head to the rest of the curriculum agenda. Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology. Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following three items and move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Definitely heard a second from Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Three items. Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes. Finance and Insurance. Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following 13 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. I just want to highlight item number 12. As required by law, we have to have an independent audit conducted of our books each year following the conclusion of our fiscal year. Mr. Wolferman, want to give you a shout-out here to you and your team. We've received a clean audit with only minor clerical errors to address, so, Mr. Wolferman, thank you to you and your team for keeping the books clean and doing right by your taxpayers. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the Board?
I would also like to add to that and commend the financial team under Mr. Wolferman and also Dr. Massimino supervising team. Thank you all so much. You did a great job.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
On item number one, I'm going to abstain in the name of Marie Anderson, yes to all other items.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
On item number one, I'll be abstaining in the name Daniel Harris, voting yes on the remaining agenda. Moving on to Dining and Transportation. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dining and Transportation Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following 10 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Perez, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. All right. Substituting in for Mr. De La Pietra this evening, doing the personnel agenda is Ms. Bourdain.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, present the following 43 items and move the motion for the foregoing.
Excellent. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Anybody? No? Seeing none. Any new business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement. So, the Office of the Mayor, Woodbridge Township Municipal Council, the Interfaith Clergy, Council of Woodbridge, the Woodbridge Township Human Rights Commission, the Independent Club of Colonial, and the Woodbridge High School Choir will host the Community Remembrance Service honoring the memory and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This will be on Monday, January 20, at 6:00 PM at the Woodbridge Acacia Center, and that's 95 Port Reading Avenue in Woodbridge. Also, in celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., our student essay contest program will be on January 27 at 6:00 PM at the Acacia Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Yes.
As I await some information, on February 12, there will be the Spring President's Council Meeting. We encourage all families to try to log on. It's a Zoom from 6 to 7?
It's 7, 7 to 8.
7 to 8. I apologize. I don't have my flyer in front of me. But just keep a lookout for the information on how to obtain the Zoom information. We'll have Dr. Massimino, Mayor McCormick, and whatever board members can be available to get on and speak. Derek Voorhees will be running the meeting efficiently as she always does. It will be an hour, but it's good information to know what's going on in the district and the township. The other thing was, any special education parents have received an email, or will be receiving an email, that on February 4, Ms. Baer's office will be holding a meeting, CPAC meeting, at the RISE Building. Please take a look in your emails and try to join us for very valuable information on any and all portals and information that we use for special education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Just want to make a special recognition this evening. One of our own, Ms. Jenny Perez, was recently recognized with the Valley La Pena Service Award. This award is a prestigious award given out by the Boy Scouts of America, and Jenny will be recognized for her giving of youth Latino students, boys and girls, opportunities. And for anybody who knows Jenny, you know her heart and soul is in David's Touch, a nonprofit she co-founded with her son. She raises money, gifts to provide to families in need, as well as children who are sick in the hospital. You're a very, very deserved honoree, and we're very proud of you. And for those of us sitting up here, there's a dinner that Jenny expects you to buy a ticket to, and that'll be in April, and we have to go out and support her. She's very deserved, and I can think of a long distinguished list of honorees who have received it before you. I've been to the dinner previously for people like Speaker Coughlin, Councilman Greg Ficarra. You're joining a long fraternity or sorority of really great people, so congratulations, well-deserved.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we will head to the public comment section of the portion of the evening. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed all of your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. As I said, we're already ready. Mr. Maris, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. It's good to be back. It's been several months since I've been here. I wanted to thank those who ran for reelection, the past election, and congratulate you on being reelected. Thank you for your service, continued service, and interest in our community and the school system. And again, I wish everybody a very healthy and happy New Year and the times ahead. Obviously, this Monday is going to be a major, important day. We're honoring the swearing-in of a new president, which I think is going to cause a paradigm shift in the way this country is operating and will be operating in the future. We also honor one great man, who I had the honor of at least knowing him while in my We also honor one great man, who I had the honor of at least knowing him while in my lifetime, and that's Dr. Martin Luther King, and everything that he brought to the development and improvement of life within this country. God rest his soul. Thanks him so much for what he has done. But moving into what I really want to speak to, it's back to DEI. It's something that I've talked about many, many times over a number of years now, and I think we, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we really initiated the role of Mr. Ali probably about 2021, if I'm correct. Yeah.
I know about that, yeah.
Yeah. Since that time, I'm really interested to know how much we have spent on DEI in total. And what I mean by that is, aside from Mr. Ali's salary, and I think he's the only one paid directly now for that specific role, but we've had a lot of educational time spent, and I say educational, I'm talking about the money spent on instructing, training sessions for teachers, staff, and of course, the indoctrination of the children with the DEI philosophy. And I'd like to know where we're going to go with that in the future, since right now we're seeing a major shift in corporations, which is no surprise to me, in our government, going away from DEI, de-emphasizing, in fact, not just de-emphasizing, neutralizing it, which is going to take a lot of time. And I think it's something the public would like to know about how the school will phase it out. How will you help to, if you will, deprogram those who have been programmed by it? And is it your intention to do so, and if not, why not? The other question I have too is, where do we stand on the new schools, be it Avenel, Hopelawn, or anywhere else, as far as major expenditures are concerned? Essentially, that is the questions that I have. Thank you.
All right. You're right back in the saddle after being out a little bit.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for the questions. So, first off, on our personnel agenda this evening, I don't know if you had a chance to see it, we are, over the course of time since we created the Director of DEI, the position has taken on new forms, new roles, and Mr. Ali, or Dr. Massimino, or I can speak to it. That includes, you know, a serp-- so, finish my thought. We're actually changing the title of the name, the title of the position, to the Director of Student Access and Engagement. And that's not necessarily a reflection of politics of the day, but a reflection of where the job has been trending in recent years. It was created in response to some of the civil upheaval we had at the time following the murder of George Floyd, and has since taken on different roles. I know Mr. Ali, I often sit on his Equity Commission meetings, where he handles everything from our tutoring program. We have a high-impact tutoring program that was first supported by federal grant, now by state grants, and as well as by district money. He's our, he works with our, we have a homeless coordinator, a homeless liaison, a role he's been heading up and actually transitioning out of because of unfortunately--
Well, he's been a credit to his position, no doubt.
Sure. And, you know, the need for it, and then, you know-- He's doing an innumerable number of things relative to students. Food drives, coat drives. Yeah, he's second as our Human Resources Officer. He's the head of our new teacher mentor program. So, in light of all that diverse group of tasks, we're changing the name today. So, that is where we're headed. I don't know, Dr. Massimino and I spoke about this. He was ready to answer in greater detail.
Mr. Maris, we've had discussions about this. So, we're probably going to disagree on how you may define DEI and how I may define DEI, how you would apply it in a political sense and how I would apply it to a school system. So, I'll respectfully disagree with anything that, you know, insinuates indoctrination, because I find that to be obviously wildly insulting, because that's not something that I would advocate for. We change job description all the time, right? We've changed our supervisors' job descriptions based on the changes of the school district. So, if I said to you, and you would have to take me at my word, so that's your choice if you do so, that I was having conversations over the summer and in the fall with colleagues, and the county superintendent that's assigned to us, it's not Middlesex County, because obviously there's conflict there, to talk about how I feel the need has evolved with students. You know, when Mr. Harris talks about translation services and high-impact tutoring and food drives, that's not specific to a subgroup, right? That's all of our students. Everybody benefits. And I've had this conversation with a number of parents. My job is to not be political, right? My job is to figure out what is the need of the student body, and what are the resources we have, what are the talents of the personnel that we employ, and how do we best leverage that to provide for our students? So, you know, any change I think you make now to anything referencing DEI is going to look like a response or reaction. There's no control for that. I don't defend things that I do in support of students. So, the idea of his job progressing the same way we used to have a Director of Personnel, and now we have an Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, I see those things as consistent. Again, we'll agree to disagree on the definitions. That's okay. I think that's part of what makes, you know, the world go around. But I am proud of the work we have done. I'm proud of the work we are doing. I am excited for the work that we will do. I think Mr. Ali's talents lend themselves to doing those things. You could see there's some responsibilities that were never put in here, right? Nobody ever knew that he was the homeless liaison for the McKinney-Vento Act, and that's something that he did, helping any family that needed that help. That's not something that'll be celebrated when we talk about DEI, but it is something to be celebrated. So, all I would say is, you know, the changes that we make, you know, I spoke with Ms. Anderson, spoke with Mr. Harris, we had a good discussion. I spoke with Mr. Ali. I would say this position, like a lot of positions, you know, being a teacher now, as opposed to 25 years ago, I'm sure is very different. Technology coordinators before iPads and Chromebooks, everything changes and everything shifts. I believe this is more accurately reflective of the work he's going to do, and really does encompass the vastness of students that he supports. So, we're looking forward to that, and obviously, the goal is to always help as many students as possible.
I appreciate. I'm glad I asked the question. I like your answers very much. It's insightful. I think it's enlightening to a lot of people that are listening right now, too. And forgive me if I said anything that I was looking at the broader context across the whole country, not specifically just this school, and obviously, you're going to be shifting resources to accomplish what you want to do going forward, which is good, and which is financial as well. And I did ask the question about how much money was spent on it over the course of its, let's say, four-year life right now.
Sure.
And I think that's a fair question, because that'll be shifting, hopefully, bringing it back into, like the old three Rs, and getting the kids up to speed in reading, writing, math, and all the essentials, as business is walking away from DEI. That's not what they're going to be looking for with people with degrees in that. They want competent engineers. They want doctors, lawyers. And I think that's where the school is making, that's the product the school has to put out, is kids that are capable of filling the positions that this country is going to need. But thank you.
Yeah.
And then, my other question was, where do we stand on the new schools?
The schools. So, if you've driven by, you can see the progress on Avenel 4 and 5. There's a fair amount of steel that's been put up, so that's always a good sign. Obviously, you know, being the construction industry, concrete and certain construction activities in the winter are a little more challenging sometimes than possible.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we'll navigate the weather as everybody does in New Jersey when you're building. On the Hopelawn School, we're still waiting for the state. We've submitted all our applications, obviously. Anytime you're dealing with anything Green Acres, there's quite a bit of, I hate to use the word red tape, but it's--
We just call it bureaucracy.
And there's a lot of different agencies, and obviously, you know, with the change in, you know, our president, and obviously, there's a lot of things going on in the state. We will wait patiently, as everybody else does, but we've submitted everything that we can submit, and, you know, we'll work with whatever we get back and take it from there. But I'll certainly be happy to provide updates, you know, when I get them. We haven't gotten--
You always have. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Maris.
And just putting a finer point on Avenel Street, School 4 and 5, the original School 4 building, that will be coming down this summer, not to be disruptive to the current school year. Structure's on time, on budget, which is always great, and then should be opening for September of 2026. So, still another year and a half to go, correct, barring any issues.
It's good to see you all again, and I do tend to get back here a little more often, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dan Finney. I'm actually from Coldsnack. My son lives here, Station Drive, Avenel. He was going to try to make it, but he doesn't look like he did. So, I'm going to speak on his behalf and for all of my grandchildren. I have six kids, five grandkids, and a foster daughter. DEI can be simplified. Didn't earn it. And strip away, I would encourage you to strip away all the pretense and the virtue signaling, as I know everybody wants respect. Everybody wants to succeed. Everybody wants to see our kids succeed. But you need to understand what DEI represents and what it's part of. There's several planks: revisionist history, social justice, CRT, climate change. I would love to have five minutes to talk with you about that. Thirty years in the military, I saw the standards go from here to here. My son now has been in the military for 17 years, my oldest son, and I could spend five minutes telling you what he told me. Let me tell you, if we don't take a hard turn in our education system that's been liberalized, you won't have a voluntary military force. And right now, only 30% of the kids graduating from high school are able to get through the greatly reduced basic standards. That's not even talking about the success rate in advanced schools or elite warfare programs. Okay, what I'm here to talk about, though, is your transgender policy. In spite of a growing mountain of evidence and nearly daily revelations to the contrary, some still think there is no need to do anything about the LGBTQ policy or woke agenda, because people don't perceive there is a problem, and they state that, hey, it's been in place for several years. I am here to say, there definitely is a problem. Starting with the fact that the vast majority of parents still have no idea what was concocted in the dark of night and sent out by Strauss Esme without public transparency. We had no idea our inalienable rights were being subverted, fundamental biology ignored, traditional faith values thrown out, and common sense went the way of the dodo bird by the very public education system that was instituted to serve us and our endeavor to raise our children. Here is the irrefutable truth. The LGBTQIA++ narrative, policies, influencers, and various avenues of indoctrination, yes, it is indoctrination, and grooming, will and are ushering in an epidemic of gender dysphoria and confusion among our youth. Consider holidays, like celebrate LGBTQIA month. We have Memorial Day, Martin Luther King Day, Independence Day, et cetera. But we've got LGBTQIA month, we've got Awareness Week, Day of Silence, and several more, actually. I can't even remember the number. It's a bunch of them throughout the year, being infused into our young, impressionable children. We don't have a large population of students with gender dysphoria now, but some adults want to live vicariously to facilitate conditions, to make it easier for kids to go down this path of harm and devastation. I think they have a psychological need to be validated, and that explains why they are on a mission to radically change social norms, redefine gender, marriage, and a host of other things. The LGBTQ policy serves to validate all of the cumulative messaging and amounts to flat-out indoctrination and an attack on the hearts and minds of our children. Everything about it is harmful. Some say conservatives are fear-mongering, as they claim it is about providing a safe place for children, to be autonomous in their gender identity from bad parents. So, policies based on words have consequences, okay? Words have meaning. The policies have consequences. What are the implications of a student-centered policy that excludes parent? If young children, even from kindergarten, are granted rights by the state that contravene parental rights, what does that mean, and what will that lead to? If administrators and staff affirm without question diagnosis or any other criteria, what is the potential harm to children who would have embraced their birth gender otherwise? I'm going to read that again. What is the potential harm to children who would have embraced their birth gender otherwise? If you really want to protect our children and provide a safe place for them to learn and grow as children, you'll redirect this, reject this divisive and dangerous policy that tries to create special rights for 1% at the expense of the 99%, but actually harms that same 1% while providing no real benefit to anyone. I know that's a headbender.
Mr. Finney? I apologize, your time--
Thank you. I pray this board will use discernment and intellectual honesty on DEI and this transgender policy to move with conviction and conscious to abolish it. And if I had another five minutes, I'd talk to you about the standards. Academic standards are just the tip of the iceberg for preparing these kids for life and competing with our adversaries.
Yes, hi.
Hi. My name is Ron Mack. I'm from Old Bridge, and I'd like to thank you for all your service. I know you put in a lot of hours here. I'd like to, I agree with the first, you're already talking about, in four days, we have a major change coming, and you all know that, regardless of where we stand on the spectrum. I appeal to the Board Attorney, I assume you're a JD, and that some of these things are going to be drastic, especially in regards to 51, 45.7, and some of your policies you're under right now, which will be under, which your JD needs to inform you or pre-advance before my-- I'm going to read, these are not my opinions, these are not my words. This is 100% of the man who's going to become president in four days from right now. And I'm going to read the words he said, just as an advance for what's coming. "The left-wing gender insanity being pushed on our children is an act of child abuse. Very simple. Here is my plan," not mine, "to stop the chemical, physical, and emotional mutilation of our youth. On day one, January 20, I will revoke Joe Biden's cruel policies on so-called gender-affirming care. Ridiculous. A process that includes giving kids puberty blockers, mutilating their physical appearance, and ultimately performing surgery on minor children. Can you believe this? I will sign a new executive order instructing every federal agency to cease all programs that promote the concept of sex and gender transition at any age. I will then ask Congress to permanently stop federal taxpayer dollars from being used to promote or pay for these procedures, and pass a law prohibiting child sexual mutilation in all 50 states. It'll go very quickly. I will declare that any hospital or healthcare provider that participates in the chemical or physical mutilation of minor youth will no longer meet federal health and safety standards for Medicaid and Medicare, and will be terminated from the program immediately. Furthermore, I will support the creation of a private right of action for victims to sue doctors who have unforgivably performed these procedures on minor children. The Department of Justice will investigate Big Pharma and the big hospital networks to determine whether they have deliberately covered up horrific, long-term side effects of sex transition in order to get rich at the expense of vulnerable patients. In this case, very vulnerable. We will also investigate whether Big Pharma or others have illegally marketed hormones or puberty blockers, which are in no way licensed or approved to use this. My Department of Education will inform states and school districts that if any teacher or school official suggests to a child that they could be trapped in the wrong body, they will be faced with severe consequences, including potential civil rights violations for sex discrimination and the elimination of federal funding." Again, these are not my words at all. "As part of our new credentialing body for teachers, we will promote positive education about the nuclear family, the roles of mothers and fathers, and celebrating rather than erasing the things that make men and women different and unique. I will ask Congress to pass a bill establishing that only genders recognized by the United States government are male and female, and they are assigned at birth. The bill will also make clear that Title IX prohibits men from participating in women's sports, and we will protect the rights of parents from being forced to allow their minor child to assume a gender which is new and an identity without the parent's consent. The identity will not be new, and it will not be without the parent's consent. No serious country should be telling its children that they were born with the wrong gender, a concept that is never heard of in all of human history. Nobody's ever heard of this, what's happening today. It was all when the radical left invented it just a few years ago. Under my leadership, this madness will end." Thank you very much, Donald J. Trump. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
Paul Lund, Hopelawn. There is a contingent of people who feel what was just stated by these gentlemen was hateful, was phobic. Some even call it violent. If I say that a man can't get pregnant, some people would accuse me of violence in this day and age. You say that you're not political, and yet, if we go back before President Obama made gender identity a protected class from an employment standpoint-- By the way, gender identity is still in the psychiatric handbook of psychiatric disorders, a protected class where employers can not consider that in their employment practices. That's what Obama set up back then. But before then, would any one of you had thought that we would promote, even down to the second grade, the idea that gender was a choice, or that there were 77 of them to choose from, and counting? I don't think so. These weren't your ideas. These wouldn't have been things that you'd consider absolutely necessary for the children and parents of Woodbridge Township. And yet, here we are. You've got the option to rescind that policy, which we know is not mandatory, and you're standing by it, and I can't understand. You're all intelligent, caring people. You have access to the same information that we do. Maybe you have some inside information, studies that we, you know, we're not familiar with, experts that have proven that affirmation is the way to go. Whatever the child wants is the way to go. The child should be in control of their healthcare, and yet, we wouldn't want them in control of our finances at home, their diets, but yes, they should have control over their medical care and their sexual freedom. Comprehensive sexual education is a perversion. They want to teach kids from an early age how to pleasure themselves, and those rights for freedom of sexuality, even trump parental rights, even parents of faith, parents of Judaism, parents of Christianity, parents of Muslim faith, who wouldn't want their kids exploring sexual until they're married. It sounds very old-fashioned, doesn't it? But shouldn't we have some say in that, especially since we're funding, we're footing the bill for all this? As far as DEI is concerned, you can change the name. It's still trying to make one group feel like they're oppressors, and another group feel like they're perennial victims, which is cruel. You're robbing children of agency when you tell them that it's systemically racist and biased against them. Even if that, in this day and age, were still true, even if we were like back in the 60s, the 1960s, the 1860s, no parent wants their kid to feel like they don't have any self-determination. I brought up Frederick Douglass. We know him still today because of the heroic work he did, along with Christian abolitionists, to undo the shackles of slavery. And yet, people want to still dwell on the slavery rather than the freedom we have in this country. I love this country. I still trust in God, and the government schools are trying to undermine that. Don't tell me you're not political. You guys go along to get along. Maybe because they control the purse strings, you do what you got to do, and you rationalize it somehow. Bad policy. We see it in the rates of mental disorder, suicidality, depression, proficiency rates, which I just got a load of. We need an alternative school system, a parallel school system. If I'm going to pay $7,000 a year for this, I need choices, and I'm going to push for school choice, and I'm going to push for a rational governor that is not in the pocket of the Radical Pedagogy Institute. that is not in the pocket of the Radical Pedagogy Institute and the radicals who are dictating policy in this state and in this country.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm a little smaller than these gentlemen. Hold on one second. Hi, my name is Kim Lindley. I'm from An Albem. I'm a former special ed teacher. So, dear Woodbridge Board of Education members, thank you for your time, effort, and commitment to the students of Woodbridge Township School District. Tonight, I would like to highlight some facts of my suggested policy. I got the number wrong, so please forgive me. I have 5756, but I believe it coincides with your policy of 5145-7. Should be removed, the development of the brain and the increase of students not attending public school. Policy 5756, or your policy, sorry, has many ramifications to go outside of the classroom. Your policy breaks down an integral part of the teacher-parent relationship. There is no longer trustworth in the teacher, does not have to provide vital information about their child. Example, the children's identity in school. A separate school file is kept on the child. Another example, the social worker can stand in front when the parents may not be favorable of the child's choice of identity. Parents are able to be informed of this crucial information when the student is ready to share with his or her parent. When did this school become the moral compass of our families? Children do better in life with a consistent routine. They need to feel loved, have a secure foundation. Consistency is one key element which is critical in a child's development emotionally and academically. These policies create confusion and division within the teacher-parent-child relationship. This is more concerning in elementary years. The teacher and the parent are the two most important people in young child-student's life. Lastly, the importance of the teacher-parent relationship greatly impacts the student's learning. An article, "Parents-Teacher Relationships: Why They Matter and How to Build Them," is one of the articles that helps provide examples of how important this relationship is. Another important reason to rescind these policies is because of the development of the brain. "When does your brain fully develop? Brain maturity from adolescence to adulthood," by Heidi Mowid, a doctor, has written this article which provides tremendous facts about the development of the brain and what ages they develop. The brain does not fully develop until around mid-20s. The brain developed at different rates, various sections develop at different times. One important fact that provides reasons why these policies should be rescinded is that sex hormones can affect men and women differently. The development direction of hormones, which girls and boys, are different. This is important due to the growth rate in various regions of the brain. Another article, "What Age Is the Brain Fully Developed?" by MentalHealthDaily.com. Some important facts about the brain from this article are: Decision-making is a skill that should improve with age. A child does not have the ability to make long-term decisions due to the age and the age and the development of the brain stages. Another important factor for this is the prefrontal cortex, which helps us make more sound decisions. The prefrontal region is responsible for helping one to understand more complicated planning. These two statements alone should rescind these policies, which do not include parental involvement. I mean, I don't understand how that alone, children have no, they don't have the knowledge, they don't have the wisdom to make these decisions. They're not the same at 13 as they are 29 or 30. I mean, children are your children. So, in having the child as a student, my goal as the teacher was I always had the ability to inspire them to learn. Hold on one second. "A teacher is given the opportunity to inspire teachers to learn, they instruct how to socialize with others, and more importantly, how to think and solve problems. When students require more emotional support, a teacher is able to call in the school's social worker or school psychologist when needed. These students may be in need of these services. All students have a head policy in place to help them if they're experiencing any bullying or example. All children are important, each learns different and grows in different various rates. A child changes their mind all the time. Even as they grow into adults, they continue to discover new things about themselves." My kids are 26 and 29, still asking for help, still trying to find themselves. So how in our right minds can we allow a child, 5 years old, to say who they are, if it's a girl or a boy? I mean, that's not your job as a teacher. You have the social worker, you have the counselor. I don't understand, I mean, the facts of the brain alone. There's too much science to say that a child is not able to make those decisions. They may not be the same person as I guess at 13, as they are 20, or as they are at 5. So I just want to thank you for your time, and I hope you rescind these policies. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Tony Pasciotti from Old Bridge. Thank you for serving the district. Although the internet has been scrubbed with this little-known fact, in 1798, Benjamin Rush had the original idea to create taxpayer-funded public schools in order for children to be able to read the Bible. He wrote, "That the only foundation for a useful education in a republic is to be laid in religion. Without this, there can be no virtue, and without virtue, there can be no liberty. And liberty is the object and life of all republican governments." Small r. Look how far we have come. Is there even a Bible present in your school library? The number-one best-selling book, year after year, since book records have been kept. We all have, with all these complex issues, how do we determine what is good and what is bad? What foundation does the district use to determine what is right and what is wrong? About 2,000 years ago, the god of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the great I Am, sent his son, Jesus, to live a life we could not live and die a cruel death we all deserve. The Bible says, "All have sinned and fall short of the glory of God. Pride is the original and worst sin. We need a Savior, and when we turn from our sin, accept Jesus the Savior, our eyes will be opened and we will be born again. We can now see what is right and what is wrong. Jesus said, 'You must be born again to see the Kingdom of God.'" Sexualizing children is wrong. If you can't see that is wrong, your eyes are not open, and you're most likely not saved. Luke 17:2 says, "It would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were thrown into the sea than that he should offend one of these little ones. If you are talking to children who are not yours about sex and sexuality or sexual orientation and hiding it from their parents while encouraging them to hide it, you are a sexual predator and should be dealt with as such. God loves us all so much that he sent his one and only Son to die for us. God loves us. God loves you. I love you. The reason why I'm here is because I love people, and if I didn't, I would have stayed home and watched TV." The left is using the LGBT community, and when they are finished with you, they will discard you. If you accept Christ into your heart, turn from your wicked ways, and believe in Him, God will not discard you. You have tremendous value and are created in His image. It is not loving to affirm a lie. God's Word is truth and is the standard of all that is right and wrong. God designed each person with a beauty, purpose, and equal value. God created us, male and female. Please consider these words today. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gerald Maglio, Director of the Dolores Turco Foundation, and I'd like to begin again with thanking you for your service. In the past, I spoke about topics of truth and wisdom. Today, I'd like to discuss the topic of love. The source of all love is God, and there can be no love without God. When He's removed from the equation, nothing is left but false attempts to gratify the senses. The opposite of love is not hate, but to use another person for one's own satisfaction. Marriage is the ideal context for the sexual relationship and the best context to raise children. The vast majority of parents and teens agree. This is supported by professionals, state laws that stress abstinence, and government agencies. But that's not what we're teaching in our schools. Instead, we teach them sex for pleasure, and as long as they don't become pregnant, anything goes. We teach them anal, oral sex, contraception, and that children are burdened to be avoided at all costs. Contraception doesn't protect their hearts, and it doesn't protect them from STDs. Then we wonder why they're sick mentally, physically, and emotionally. We're puzzled by the STD epidemic, 20 million new cases each year, half between the ages of 15 and 24. We question why they're depressed, anxious, why they turn to drugs, alcohol, and other escapes, and why more and more drop out of school and end up poor. But there is a solution to all these problems, and it's rooted in God's design for love. Research shows that teens that graduate from high school, get a job, get married, and then have children, there's only 2% chance they'll end up in poverty, and this is known as a success sequence. Research also shows that married couples are the happiest, healthiest, most prosperous, and have the best sex lives. There are compelling reasons to return to the true meaning of love. These kids want love. And those of us that know true love know it means sacrifice, but the rewards are beyond any momentary gratification. Instead, there's a push to commodify the body, where it becomes a product for sex. Sex without love leads to every kind of human misery: porn, diseases, rape, sex trafficking, where 50% of the victims are children. The average age of entry is 12. Most of these involve harm to women and children. Porn is not harmless. It teaches men to treat women as objects instead of human beings created in the image and likeness of God. It teaches boys that when girls say no, they really mean yes, and gives them permission to rape and sexually assault girls. Sadly, 1 in 4 and 1 in 7, girls and 1 in 7 boys, are sexually assaulted before they're 18. Today, there exists an agenda to replace the spirit of life and love of God with technology and materialism. There's a connection between the transgender ideology and transhumanism. Tech wants to replace genuine love by twisting the sexuality of the human being, created by God's design to love and be loved, and consummated in a union between a man and a woman as marriage, and God wants to have that intimate relationship with each one of us. In contrast, we have a technological society that replaces enduring love with sex gratification, and children that don't know better are lured into believing this lie. Transgender is a technological problem response to a heart problem. The heart is broken and needs repair, and we offer children mutilation and sterilization instead, and lead them to believe that this will replace the longing in their hearts. But this opens the door to transhumanism. The more we use technology to replace human interaction, the more we become dependent upon tech and more isolated from the love of others and love of God, and become less human in our interactions, and more capable of atrocities, accepting atrocities against humanity, such as the mutilation of children, trafficking of women and children, and sexual exploitation. It's obvious that transgender policies have very serious and expensive ramifications for anyone that enforces them. You heard about our president-elect's policies. Also, the House of Representatives passed a bill that would ban transgender athletes from competing in women's and girls' sports that receive federal funding, stating that Americans are united in our belief that men have no place in women's sports, whether it's breaking records, entering locker rooms, or stealing scholarship opportunities. I just wanted to point out that transgender policies will jeopardize federal funding and expose school boards to litigation in federal court, where the majority of these cases are adjudicated or settled for hundreds of thousands of dollars for each case that violates freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and/or parental rights. Transgenderism sterilizes the body just as transhumanism sterilizes the mind and opens it up to control by a power greater than oneself. You can choose God as your higher power, or you can choose technology. They both affect relationships. One leads to love and abundant life, the other to isolation and dependency. It's my hope that you'll choose love and that God will bless you and your families abundantly and bring success to all your endeavors. And thank you for the opportunity to address this board.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Chief Wuster, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you in February. Thank you very much.[1791.61][1791.61]